Good afternoon and welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of February 25th, 2019. Those members of the audience, please join the City Council in a salute to our flag.
..................................................................
Roll call.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Keith?
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Counselor Morbeto?
Here.
Here. Counselor Novoselfsky?
Here.
Here. Counselor Patch is absent. Counselor Powers?
Yeah.
Here. Counselor Rizzo?
Here.
Here. Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Here.
Here. And Counsel President Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present.
Madam Clerk, prior to the first order of business, we have three items that we have to speak of. First is Jessica Janino was on a business trip and she offers her apologies to the community for having to do so. And then unfortunately, we have two members of the City Council who called in and said that they were sick, George Rotundo and Charlie Patch. We hope them a speedy recovery. Next, we have a sad occasion of saying that four years ago today, Revere lost one of our nice, good, great guys from Ward One, Richard Penta. He passed away four years ago today, and I thought that worthy of mentioning before we start the City Council meeting. And on a happy note, the Revere City Council has a member tonight who turns forty, and his name is Counselor Patrick Keith. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number two, certificate of commendation will be presented to Speaker Robert A. DeLeo for serving the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as Speaker of the House for ten years.
Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the audience you have with you some of your colleagues from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Unfortunately, Representative Rosalie Vincent couldn't be in attendance, but she sent a very able and dedicated young man, Richard Serino, who is our aide. Richard, thank you for being here. This certificate of commendation, in grateful appreciation of his dedicated public service to the residents of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and to the residents of Revere, having served as Speaker of the House of Representatives for ten years, in addition to being elected to serve for six-term special recognition, is hereby awarded to Robert A. DeLeo, Massachusetts Speaker of the House. During his tenure, Speaker DeLeo has worked tirelessly to support legislation promoting a variety of issues such as economic development, clean energy, educational opportunities, firearm safety, and opioid control, all of which have a tremendous and positive impact on the quality of life for our Revere residents. And for that, the City Council, on behalf of its residents, is thankful. This certificate of commendation is presented by the City Council of the City of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of citizens this 25th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2019, in the Independence of the United States of America, the 242nd, signed by Ashley E. Melnick, City Clerk, and signed by Atrev Guanasso, City Council President. Mr. Speaker. There's some words going to be offered out. Initially, Mr. Speaker, and to those in attendance and those at home, this motion was offered out by Joanne McKenna from Ward One, and she graciously asked all the City Council to join in with her on this, and so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I'd like to say a few words.
Joanne, yes.
Thank you. This is not only an accommodation for being the Speaker of the House for ten years, it goes much deeper than that. I had to write this because I couldn't remember it. You're a caring and passionate person and a really good man. You are always going out of your way to help anyone that needs it. To me, you've been a great friend and a great advocate, helping me to address and resolve some of my major issues in my community. I want to thank you, Speaker DeLeo, for your continued support and dedication to the residents of Revere and especially to the Beauchamp community. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. And Joanne read that down. She showed it to me downstairs, and I had a little different version of that, which you won't talk about right now. Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. You know, it's interesting, as Speaker of the House, you sometimes get recognized for various items that deal with statewide issues. And you get, you know, recognized whether it's, you know, helping the homeless or the mentally or physically disabled or whatever, public safety, whatever it may be. This one is a little more special. And I say that because of the fact that this comes from people that I work with and that I represent on a daily basis. And for these folks to be showing their appreciation for my work, I can't tell you how much it truly, truly means to me. This really means a lot. And I can't thank you enough. You know, when I first was elected, if you had told me at that time that I would become Speaker and then turn out to be the longest-serving Speaker in the history of Massachusetts, I would have said, oh, my God, I'm not so sure about that. But one thing I always tried to keep in mind, whether it was in Ways and Means or whatever chairmanship I may have had, or even now as Speaker, is that I have never forgotten, most importantly, the people that put me here. From my very first day, right up until today, I've had a love affair with this city. The people here in Revere have treated me unbelievably, obviously elected me a number of times, and the friendships that I've made here, you know, I sometimes get stopped by people in the city who'll say, what part of the city do you live in? I say, well, actually, I live in another town. And they're amazed by that because they feel, most importantly, I'm one of their own. And that's the way I always want to be thought of, as the son of the city of Revere. Thank you and God bless everyone.
You're going to take a picture with Mr. Speaker.
Oh.
Next order of business is the calendar item number three, 19-040, Joint Utility Company Meeting with Comcast, National Grid, and Verizon to discuss double poles. We got a call from Dan Cameron, who's a representative of National Grid, and he extends his apologies for not being here, but he was outside doing work on the wind damage control. So he's providing services to the community. Excuse me. Providing services to the communities as we speak, so we wish well, Dan, and hope that all the power is restored to all the people who have lost it. Stan, I see you brought Kim with you from Comcast. Welcome. Any members of the City Council? Sam, would you like to say something to the first?
Yeah, just to let you know, I did send out the report on the 7th, so there's been some changes. Some of those numbers have moved around, but overall, the numbers in Engrid's pile has been reduced. They're under 100 now at 85, and they started to make their way down. One of the issues I do see, there are 28 in a non-participating third party, which typically ends up being the city or the school department. It might be an Intranet. So if you could, if there's someone like the wiring inspector that can get this list to take a look at that, it would really enhance our ability to move more poles down or take more poles out.
So noted. Any councilors wishing to address any questions on double poles? And this, by the way, is double pole conversation. Any other conversation is not germane to the issues. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a double pole that we've been talking about for three and a half years now. I've been a counselor. It's 76. It doesn't work, first of all. It's on a 60-foot crosswalk, so it's on the corner of a 60-foot crosswalk. That doesn't work.
What's the address?
It's, I don't know the address. It's pole 76 on Wuthrav. It's a double pole, and it has concrete around the base of it, which was supposed to be removed three years ago, and it's still there.
Yeah, it's still in Engrid's ball court. I spoke to Dan. They were going to take care of that, so I'll follow up with Dan tomorrow on that very pole.
Okay. We've been talking about this for three years now.
No, I understand that. And I did speak to Dan last time we were in, in October, and he said that it would be addressed. I'll follow up with him.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other councilors wishing to speak?
I'm going to defer to-
Counsel Powers.
I'm going to defer to Counselor Rizzo on this.
Counselor Rizzo.
He had put a motion regarding a double pole at 110 Oak Island Street, and I think he would like to say something on this.
Counselor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Just an update, if we could. Do you have one, Mr. Mayor?
On Oak Island, a double pole.
At 110 Oak Island? I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. That was a pole that was in the middle of a driveway. So I know that President Guanasso had said he wants to keep it to double poles, but there was an issue at 110 Oak Island Street that you and I have been communicating on. I apologize. I was, I got ahead of myself in the calendar here, but on the 110 Oak Island, that's a pole that's like in the middle of somebody's driveway. And I guess that it's been promised now for several years that that pole was going to be moved for those residents. And I think there was an expense issue that maybe the city would have to incur.
Correct.
But nonetheless, it's something that I'd like to see go forward with. There was a motion that I believe has passed. I don't think the motion was rejected or vetoed in any way, so I think the motion has passed the City Council, and it should be something that I would like to maybe, if we could start maybe getting the ball moving so that we can move that pole somehow.
Counselor, as I've explained, you know, as soon as, you know, we receive a check to have that removed or some form of payment, then we can start the ball rolling.
So you're waiting on payment?
Correct.
Prior to getting, and has the, you know, has an invoice been produced or?
We've received nothing at this juncture.
No, but I mean, like, has the city received an invoice to pay, or has there been communication with Public Works or somebody who could start to facilitate that?
I will send you the contact again in engineering of who the city has to contact.
If you could do that for me, because, you know, it is some, I mean, I know that these people, you know, they've pretty much thrown up their hands now and just assumed that the city doesn't want to help them, which isn't the case. Of course, we do want to help them. If it's a payment issue where, as I say, it has not been rejected in any way to go forward with it, I believe it's something that we need to do for them. I wouldn't want a pole in the middle of my driveway, and I don't think anybody in the City Council would want a pole in the middle of their driveway. It's just how it managed to shake itself out, maybe when the house was built or when, I'm not exactly sure how it got that way.
There could be a host of reasons for it, but I do know that just about every entity is on that pole, you know, having viewed the pole myself. But, you know, we did explain that it was a cost to the city. I'll make sure that you get a contact that the city can start the engineering process. There's a fee involved, and they can work that out, and it will be put on the schedule.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Rizzo, that's if you're at a occasion, poles are poles, double poles are single poles. Well, it's germane to the issue. Any, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Stan, Adrian, nice to see you guys. Actually, I only have about, there's nine locations in my neighborhood, and most of them go back to 2016. But just as an FYI, on, there's one on Damon Street, D-A-M-O-N Street.
Yep.
There's no such animal. It used to be Dehome Street, pole 644, so you can just eliminate that one altogether. It's been done.
That's in Engrid's ball court. They're going to have to eliminate that? They're going to have to take it out of the system?
Let them know, so.
Yep.
Other than that, there's no sense in me saying anything now because Dan's not here, so.
If you do have a list of those double poles, you want to get it out to all of us, the nine poles in question?
I'll send them by email to you.
Okay.
Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, most of my issues have been sent already to Dan, and I do want to give some credit, for the most part, when I'm sending, more so on the emergencies. I know the double poles are certainly nuisance, but more so on the emergencies, your team has been very responsive, and I truly appreciate that. When I send something to Dan and yourself recently, things have been taken care of within, you know, 24 to 48 hours on issues that become a nuisance, whether it's a light out. So those are the most helpful when you get, when you get to us, get back to us really quickly and take care of what the residents need. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keith. Any other councilors wishing to speak? I just have a friendly reminder, Stan, that all the work that National Grid did on Revere Street this past summer and fall, with all the double pole locations that they added on to further the improvement of electricity and power to the Ocean side, Ocean Apartments, can we get on those as soon as possible? Because they are, it's right on the main drag of Revere Street, and they're unsightly.
Yeah, actually, they've made very good progress. Engrid has moved off of them. I do see at least four that would fall into the third-party municipal lines. They're kind of holding us up, and I suspect that they're, as I said earlier, school department lines.
Okay.
And the balance, I'm sure, are going to come our way very quickly. And currently, we don't have any in our ball court, but as soon as they begin to hit in, you know, numbers, and it looks like Revere Street will be one of the first to hit us, we'll take care of them.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other councilors? Seeing none, thank you very much for your attendance. We appreciate you coming forward and helping us out.
Okay, Dan's buying next time.
Well, he has a legitimate excuse. He's restoring power. And, you know, there's certain sections of Revere that lost power today.
Exactly.
So we know he's working on it.
When I came in, I saw two poles coming in on a truck on Engrid, so I know that he's busy.
Our east side got hit, so I know they're working there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number four, public hearings. Hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to a nine-month moratorium on the granting of special permits for lodging and rooming houses.
Are there any proponents for this particular item? Any proponents? People in favor of this particular ordinance? Okay, seeing none. Are there any opponents? Hearing and seeing none. City councilors. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I put this in Father's public hearing to do a nine-month moratorium so we can put together Airbnb ordinance in the city. And because there's some lodging houses that are already trying to do that in its entirety. So I know the planning board has a hearing on it tomorrow night, and this will be going into committee, so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a response from them, and hopefully we can start the moratorium and work on our Airbnb ordinance and get that going.
Very good. Any other councilors? Counselor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you're well aware, we're currently working on an Airbnb ordinance. You're one of the leaders in this as well. We're working with the city solicitor right now and some of the team to draft a proper ordinance that would hopefully work for both the users of Airbnb, the owners of Airbnb, and the city of Revere, because at the end of the day, this isn't something that we don't want to not have because it's going to happen regardless, but we want to put it into the areas that we think would be the most beneficial for both. So we're looking at Cambridge ordinance, the Boston ordinance, and of course, working potentially with some people directly with Airbnb so that if we do put something forward, it's not challenged, because that's pretty much what we've seen across the state, is every time there's an Airbnb ordinance put out, it's been challenged because of legality. So we are working on something comprehensive right now. We actually have a second meeting next week, so, this week, I apologize, and we'll hopefully have some more information. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keith. If you, if anyone noticed, this past Sunday in the Boston Globe, there was a section in reference to Airbnb in New York, and they had a situation where this individual had a multifamily home, and he converted it all to an Airbnb. It was like a mini hotel, and the law finally came in on him, because this is not the intention was initially of Airbnb. And we see this infiltration throughout our community, and I see Florida plates. I see right outside my window, there's a car with a Florida plate that's been there for over a week and a half, never been touched during the snow or anything. So these Airbnbs are getting out of control, and we're such a limited and densely populated area with so many cars on our own, we don't need outsiders burying us with their cars. So I think all the work, Counselor Keith, that's being done in the committee is very valid, and I hope that we get some resolution of this as soon as possible. This will be referred to the zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number five, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance relative to certain persons not represented under Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 150E, Section 10.
Any proponents? Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none? Any opponents? Anyone who is in opposition to this? Seeing and hearing none? Any city councilors? Seeing and hearing none? This will refer to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number six, hearing called is ordered on an ordinance further amending an ordinance relative to snow and ice removal on sidewalks.
There any proponents? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had an issue before me recently about water running off of, which would probably address the same thing, onto the street, causing a problem. And when the owner, we looked up to find who the owner was, we found out they lived out of town. They did correct it, but it took several days. And the purpose of the motion I put in is to make the person that owns the property, that is not an occupant, respond to this as quickly as possible. And if they don't respond to it, then a citation be issued along with a fine. Obviously, if somebody owns a two, three, or four-family house, and they're not living in the city, then that's a commercial property, as far as I'm concerned. And they should be addressing it ASAP to help the residents who do live on that street, who do live in the city and do pay taxes also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Powers spoke on this because he was the maker of the motion. Any opponents in the audience? Anyone in opposition to this? When you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Jan Dumas, 50 Walnut Avenue. Thank you for letting me speak, sir. I have a question regarding this city itself. The city is notorious for not picking up its own snow. I've made several complaints to the park in my neighborhood, Costa Park. It's also a walkway for children going to Garfield School or to the high school, and the city doesn't do a very good job of picking up its own snow and ice there. And it's nice that you keep talking about these proposals to force residents. Where's the city in all of this? Is the city going to take responsibility for itself?
Well, this, you're speaking as an opponent. This is going to be referred to Legislative Affairs where all questions can be asked as an informal session. We're asking, and so that's your reason for opposing this. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, point of information.
Counsel Powers.
This doesn't affect residents. This affects people that own property, that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing, living outside the city and collecting monies for that property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing and hearing none? Any city councilors wishing to speak? Counsel McKenna to the chair, please. You ask him to speak. Counsel McKenna.
So I was the maker of this motion. Counselor Janino and I. Are we on six?
Yes.
No, he's saying we were on six.
We're on six.
Oh, yes. I was, I was the maker of the motion, not John Powers. That was-
Excuse me. I was informed it was John Powers. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I did discuss, I did discuss it with the clerk.
Okay. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you.
Counselor Janino and I wrote the ordinance for this motion.
Okay.
Okay. We also added some pump pipes-
Discharged.
-that are illegally discharging, so that's part of the motion. And that was fixed, as Counselor Powers said, it's up to the landlord to clear the way.
Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point, Counsel Powers.
I'm not talking about residents that live in that, the property, that they own the property. I'm talking about people that live outside the city, and this is just an amendment to that motion.
Oh, fine. That's fine. I just wanted to clarify that it was Counselor Janino and I that wrote the-
So noted.
I had just clarified it right now. Thank you.
What do you call that, plagiarism? Something like that?
Call it sent to your caller.
This is going to, we refer this to Legislative Affairs. Calendar item number seven.
Calendar item number seven, hearing called is ordered on the application of James George on behalf of Extonet Systems and AT&amp;T Wireless, requesting permission from the Revere City Council to install small cell wireless equipment on an existing National Grid wood utility distribution pole at the corner of 116 State Road and 4 Unity Ave.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. James George. I live in Salem, Massachusetts, 158 A Lafayette Street. The applicant today is seeking to co-locate his client with, on behalf of Extonet Systems and AT&amp;T Wireless. We are seeking to co-locate small cell antenna onto an existing National Grid-owned utility pole. The pole is at 116 State Road at the intersection of Unity Avenue that goes up the hill. It's a commercial, am I too loud? Is this that? All right. It is a commercial area. It's a high-density area that we need quite badly in Ward One, Counselor McKenna's ward, right outside Beauchamp Tea Station. And it's a very difficult area to cover because the hill goes backwards, if you look in the other direction. So we're looking to densify the area-
From the, from the health aspect of it, the way I like to explain it is each, each antenna is regulated by the FCC. This propagates less than 3% of the allowed government propagation into, into a neighborhood from the antennas themselves. What we can do for the, for the next hearing with your board is to, is to come up with a report on, and it lays out what type of antenna this is, and the, the regulated percentage of, of propagation, and the safety, the safety standards therein. So, it is, it is designed for these small cells to, to propagate at a low energy and a low propagation for, for health-related matters.
On the other hand, I live in Beachmont, and the cell service is terrible. So, I have to be in a certain room in the middle of the floor to talk on my cell, or people can't hear me. So, it is needed, but we would like to have like a report on what the effects of the health are, because our constituents are asking through texts and emails, so to just give them, you know, that benefit.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Counselor. Counselor Zambuto.
Thank you, Mr. President, just for the edification of the council. Some of us have been here a long time. We've had a report on this, and not harmful in any way. We, I'm, I'm sure he can produce us that similar report that we've gotten in the past. I'm sure this is going to my committee, the zoning committee?
This is going to zoning subcommittee. Exactly.
These people are very cooperative, willing to work with us. They even offer to cooperate financially with us, so that goes a long way with me.
I don't know about that.
Thank you.
We also want to note that Counselor Rotundo is now joining us. Counselor Rotundo.
Can I speak on this topic?
Counsel Rotundo.
And thank you, by the way. I'll address you later. Actually, this is a different system. 5G is totally different than 4G. Is that not correct? At least by the standards that I'm looking at from the EU, as well as here in the States? Frequency, degree of electromagnetic field, distribution, things of that nature?
To try to address your question, the, the standard of 5G, this, this small cell technology advances into the 5G technology, yes. It advances into that stage. So, for the technical question, what, what are you asking me? Is it, is it...
So, is it a 5G product, or is it a non-5G product? Or is it a, like...
No, I would say this would be a 5G product, advancing from the present 3G, 4G into the 5G status.
So, it is a 5G product. So, there are some studies in Europe that show that there are some concerns regarding electromagnetic fields, because this is a different product than the four that I think Counselor Zambuto might be referring to, at least what I've read. But then again, you know, I think what I'll do, Counsel McKenna, is provide some of the stuff that I can get from partners and so forth, and present that to you. They're going to have theirs. But at the end of the day, the, they're not going to allow anything into our community that's going to be harmful, but I know the concern. Thank you.
Counsel Rotundo, just to note that this is going to zoning, so you can, you can send that information over to zoning, and they can talk over the information you have.
And on a personal note, I want to thank you. I didn't expect to get out of the hospital as quickly as I did. Thank you.
We noted that you were, were not feeling well. Any other members of the council wishing to speak? This will be referred to zoning subcommittee. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Unfinished business, calendar item number eight, motion presented by Counselor Morabito.
Madam Clerk, prior to speaking on eight and nine, I think unfinished business, where we are still having a lot of work to do on these two items, why don't we just send them over to, refer them over to Legislative Affairs on calendar item number eight, and the Ways and Means on calendar item number nine?
Mr. President...
Counselor Morabito.
I agree with you, number eight. I would like to, motion 19030, I'd like to put that in Legislative Affairs, but I'd like to table 19031 for right now.
You, you don't want 19031 to go to Ways and Means?
I'd like to table it for right now. Actually, I'm working on this with Counsel Rotundo right now.
So, that's why we're going to send it over to Ways and Means, and you can, you can give all the information to the chair, Ways and Means. And Counsel Rotundo, you can also put your input on this also.
Actually, if I could, Counsel Rotundo, for you to the clerk, would it be possible to send a formal at a CC, the mayor, to Barbara Pucci, asking for his input on this particular motion?
So noted.
Thank you.
Those, eight will go to Legislative Affairs, and nine will go to Ways and Means. Calendar item number 10.
Rule 23 Committee Reports, motions or communications are being reported out of committee with a recommendation to be placed on file. Calendar item number 10, an ordinance prohibiting the distribution of single-use disposable plastic shopping bags.
Mr. President, I'd like to refer that to committee.
Counselor Morabito.
I would like to refer that back to committee.
Refer back to Legislative Affairs. Absolutely. So noted. Counselor McKenna.
Can we put also 11? I just talked to Counselor Janino, and could we put 11 and 12 also in committee?
We can refer calendar item number 11 back to Legislative Affairs, and calendar item number 12 back to Legislative Affairs.
Thank you very much.
At the request of the makers of the ordinance. Absolutely. So noted. Please, clerk, 11 and 12, we refer it to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number 13, Parking Operations Report and Activities Internal Controls Report.
Place that on file.
Calendar item number 14, An Ordinance Further Amending Section 17.16.060 of the Zoning Ordinances of the City of Riviere Relative to Townhouses.
Place that on file.
Calendar item number 15, Motion Presented by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor notify RCN and their contractors operating in the city of Riviere, reminding them of OSHA rules and standards. Bucket trucks have been reported being driven with employees up in the bucket, creating a dangerous situation for both employees and residents, should the truck ever flip and land on unsuspecting people, property, or power lines.
Place it on, place it on file.
Calendar item number 16, Motion Presented by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor request a representative from the SUDY office to appear before the city council to discuss their workload and schedule.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 17, Motion Presented by Counselors McKenna and Rizzo, that the mayor direct, or the mayor request the Director of Economic Development and Planning to appear before the city council to discuss workmanship and planning of infrastructure repairs and alterations, specifically the pedestrian bumpout on Riviere Beach Parkway and Winthrop Avenue.
Place on file.
Calendar item number 18, Motion Presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the members of the DAG, Peer Review Group, and HYM present any and all traffic mitigation.
Place that on file.
Calendar item number 19, Motion Presented by Counselor Rizzo, that the mayor instruct the chief of police to appear before the city council to discuss policies and procedures pertaining to officers currently enlisted in the armed forces and being deployed.
Place that on file.
Onto motions, calendar item number 20, Motion Presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the city council with a description of what services are provided by healthy community initiatives in Riviere. Further, provide the funding sources and a list of grants that are used to support the department and/or its efforts.
Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. Just a little concerned about actually what the function is, and we'll just leave that for when I get further information. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So noted.
Mr. President?
Counsel Rotundo.
Can I take the motion up for reconsideration, hoping that does not prevail?
Absolutely. On which motion?
Number 20?
I don't think you need to do that. Everyone voted for it. Suspend rules, all in favor, suspend rules, all in motion. Reconsideration does not prevail. So noted. Back to regular order of business.
Calendar item number 21, Motion Presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor request Speaker DeLeo, Senator Boncorie, Representative Vincent, and Congresswoman Clark, in conjunction with the city of Riviere, to join hands with Congressman Stephen Lynch and take aim on a bill he filed that would allow the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine to study the health impacts from planes. This bill would benefit the health and well-being of Riviere residents who are directly impacted by Logan Airport's flight paths. In a recent six-month period, 64,000 planes flew over Riviere, primarily Beachmont. And it's time for Suffolk County legislatures and Riviere's representatives to stand up and advocate for the health and well-being of Riviere's residents.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every two minutes, 24 hours a day, planes fly over the city of Riviere, especially Beachmont. 64,000 planes have gone over Beachmont in the last six months. That is almost Massport's entire fleet. The residents of Riviere, Beachmont are inundated constantly with air, stress, and noise pollution. Their quality of life is compromised every single day. In addition to sleep deprivation, entertaining, talking on the phone, watching television are interrupted constantly by air pollution noise. Our legislators and this body advocated to stop wheel abrader because of its toxicity. But what about all the people in Riviere that are being, be affected by the carbon dioxide emissions from jet fuels fueling from overhead planes? By the stress we all are suffering, and by the noise levels of arriving and departing planes on a daily basis, 24 hours a day? And why is the heaviest air traffic going over Beachmont, Winthrop, East Boston, and Lynn? Because we are poor urban cities, and we don't complain. We accept it. We have no representation to fight for us. Riviere's flight ceiling is 400 feet. They almost touch the trees on arrival to Logan. Not like District Eight, the more affluent surrounding cities like Howell, Situate, Milton, to name a few. Over Milton, planes fly between 3,500 feet and 10,000 feet. Last year, there were over 74,000 complaints, mostly from these communities. None, I think it was 150, or maybe 1,500 from Riviere, Winthrop, East Boston, and Chelsea and Lynn. I forgot Chelsea on that. As we speak, Massport is constructing four more bays in Terminal E to house A380 Airbus planes that hold 500 to 800 people, coming in from other parts of the world to Logan. These massive planes will be flying over Beachmont soon, in addition to the ones that are already flying over now. Just recently, Massport came out with an air study that said there was an increase of COPD, asthma, heart attacks, and cancer in the area of Riviere, Winthrop, Chelsea, East Boston, and Lynn. But they could not determine that this increase was due to the traffic, air traffic, causing the increase. After a conversation with Congressman Lynch, he advised me to get my legislators involved. Congressman Lynch is leading the way to help and keep his District Eight constituents healthy, healthy, and to live a better quality of life. I am calling out our Riviere legislatures and this body to join hands with Congressman Lynch and fight for the Riviere residents to lead a healthier quality of life on a daily basis. Thank you.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think that's an excellent motion. I would like to, with the counselor's permission, amend that to have a representative from Massport come here with information with regard to the decibel level when planes are flying not only over Beachmont, but all over, also over the Pointe du Pines area. I think that it's insane what's happening down there now. I, I can't imagine why these planes can't go, stay more out over the water, because when you look at them after they leave the Pointe du Pines area, that's where they are. They're out over the water. And I'm sure that the fact that they, the people in Swamscot and Ahant don't want them going over their areas, but we don't want them going over ours either. And I think a representative from Massport should come here and explain the decibel levels, and, and what those monitors that monitor the decibels down there, what information they're giving to those monitors. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. I respect Counselor Powers' motion, amendment, but I would really would like to see this filed as a motion. If that's okay with you.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Any other counselors wishing to speak? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? State your name and address for the record, please.
Eric Lampadakio, 43 Tapley Avenue. Counsel McKenna, thank you for putting this motion in. This means a lot to a lot of people in this city. The Mass DEP does air quality studies in the surrounding communities, Boston and Lynn, but they don't do a study in Riviere. I would like to see them come in and test our air quality, make sure it is a healthy place to live. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So noted.
Calendar item number 22, Motion Presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor request the parking director to prepare a report of the number, number and address of tickets issued on Kimball Avenue and North Shore Road over the last six months.
Counsel Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So noted. Seeing no further business from the Riviere City Council, we thank you for your attendance, and those at home viewing us. This city, Riviere City Council, will be adjourned until March 11th. Thank you.